We'll call to order the Pennsylvania County Finance Committee meeting Tuesday, June 17th, 2023, 2:30 PM, Board Meeting Room 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Cheshire, Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Tucker.
Present.
Mr. Warren.
Present.
And I will also note that we have Mr. Ingram and Mr. Scares.
Yes, and Ms. Clerk, I was contacted by Mr. Cheshire that indicated he would be here, but he would be slightly delayed. Okay? Are there items to be added to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, gonna get a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker, do I have a second?
Ms. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, please cast your votes. Motion carries unanimously. We're down to new business, item one, 5A is personal property tax formula discussion. Ms. Vanderhyde.
And I have a couple of things that's kind of on the agenda for the next, and if you do have copies of that, we'll. Sorry about that.
For the record, Ms. Gore is here for my commissioner revenue, thank you.
Yes, I did invite her because I know she is the expert, not I. So the copies that you have before you go over just general information that I knew, I also sent those to Ms. Gore to see if she had any changes or if I'd misspoke in any kind of way. So what's gonna show up on the slides? She does make note that the amounts that are listed in here are not, are before the 30% is applied. So if you have a thousand dollar vehicle, 30% of that is really $300. So she's put that in parentheses, and that's gonna show up on the screens, but I didn't have time to reprint everything. But I just wanted to make sure that you all understand the complexity of personal property and what all is involved in that. And of course, Ms. Gore is here to share information that she knows that I do not know. But the first slide just speaks to, you know, what we generally consider personal property, and that's for our qualifying vehicles. Currently, that's what, you know, the rate for personal property is $9 per hundred dollars of assessed value at 30% of value. And so I have listed out the different categories. The first is qualifying events or qualifying vehicles. And of course, the vehicles, they are ones that qualify for your personal property tax relief. And currently, that figure is at 55%. We increased that this year because the values were so much greater this year than they were last year. And so we thought that would help some of our citizens out. So if you have a vehicle that's valued at $1,000 or $300 if you apply the 30%, they're going to get 30%, I mean, they're gonna get 55, 100% of that relief. So from 1,001 or 301 to $20,000 or $6,000 if you apply the 30%, they qualify for 55% relief. But anything over that qualifying amount of $20,001, they're gonna have to pay the whole bill. So that's gonna be, you know, $9 per hundred dollars of assessed value. But of course, it's at 30% of that value that we get from J.D. Power. So then you have your non-qualified personal property. And so your non-qualified personal property is going to be, it includes business and farm use vehicles, water, airplanes, mobile homes, and any other business personal property. And that is valued on a sliding scale. And I'll let you add, are there multiple sliding scales?
Just one. We have just one sliding scale for the business personal property. It ranges from 30% down to 5% of cost.
Okay.
And then qualified vehicles over that $6,000 threshold, of course, the taxpayers, I said on the previous slide, they have to pay the 100% of the tax, and there is no relief for that portion. One important note that I didn't know until recently, like last week, I think I've been told this before, but it was, I was reminded of it last week, is that your machinery and tool tax of $4.50, your personal property cannot go below that. So we would have to look also at M&amp;T when, you know, valuing this. And of course, there are some challenges to, you know, changing the personal property tax structure. Some of those challenges include, it's gonna be both positive and negative impacts to our county citizens. And you can't just change the rate without changing the way you value that rate or the valuation method. So changing the rate and the valuation methods will not result in a net neutral effect. So I think the last time we looked at it, what you all wanted Ms. Hammack to do is for it to be revenue neutral. And it's nearly impossible for that to happen. It's gonna be hard when you're dealing with a sliding scale and then you're dealing with the 30% of value on, you know, the market value. So one thing to note is that we would definitely have to work with the commissioner's office because she's the person that sets the valuation method. And that is by code. So you all could recommend a rate, but we all have to work in conjunction with each other to make sure that we're setting that rate, everything's assessed fairly, and we're guaranteeing solid revenue and fair treatment to all of our taxpayers. So that's what I have. We can certainly get started this year with that process if that's where you all want to go. We could look at different ways to do it, but it's not something that we're gonna decide today and tomorrow, change it.
Right.
Because it's a lot that goes into it. Do you have other things to add? Because I'm sure.
No, actually, I really don't have anything to add. I just came up in case you had questions that I might could answer for you. That's all. Basically, you covered everything.
Any questions from committee members?
I'm good right now, yeah.
I think I'm good. This topic, we've talked about it every year for a while now. I know, Robin, but it's the optics of the $9 being out there. So, you know, I think collectively as a board, not just Finance Committee, if we could have you all work together and see if it's feasible to get that number less, even if we have to change, you know, lower the number and change the percentage so that it comes out right and it doesn't violate the, any of the other sliding scales or the merchant's machine and tool tax.
M&amp;T.
I think that would be kind of where we would land, if that's possible. And like I said, y'all work in conjunction to see if that is feasible. Because it, you know, we know that we've been really close on a lot of economic development deals and all, and anything we can do that doesn't give off any opportunities for a negative appearance would probably be positive for all of us. And, you know, I think that's kind of where we were when the conversation continues to come up, so.
Well, I have a question for the board. So are you trying to just change the rate and get away from being revenue neutral? Or are you trying to remain revenue neutral and change the rate? Because as Ms. Vanderhyde said, when we worked on that before, we couldn't come to any kind of conclusion where we could remain revenue neutral and change.
Well, I mean, I.
The methods. Now, we can.
You know, I'm just speaking for myself now, I'm not speaking for the board. But I think for me.
The way it looks.
I don't think we can lose revenue, but if we get pretty close to neutral and are able to lower, so it doesn't say $9, it might say whatever the number is, Robin, I don't, haven't done the math, but say, you know, it's $4 and some odd cents, so it does, the machine and tools is compliant with that, but change the percentage instead of it being, you know, a 30% discount, it's a lesser discount, but ends up getting pretty close to the 270.
To the balance.
So, I mean, to me, that would make sense because that $9, when somebody's looking at the area, not only for economic development, but locating here, and left they dev into the formula, it looks.
It does.
Wouldn't make you very happy if you thought you had to pay the whole $9, you know.
Right.
So, I mean, that was the premise. I mean, that.
I just know, like I said before, we kept the same methodology, but, you know, some went up, some stayed the same, some dropped drastically, you know, it was just all over the place.
So, I guess, let's just say hypothetically, speaking, we changed it, the M and, the M and T is 450. So if we changed the personal property for vehicles to 450, and then we backed into getting to 270, so whatever that percentage would be, so that we're neutral with that, in compliance with the M and T, is that even a possibility?
It is, yes, because I've been here long enough that I can remember when the rate was like 425.
Yeah.
And we had the same methodology, so, I mean, but of course.
But we can change, I mean, my point is, we can change the percentage on the vehicles.
We can.
So that we could make the 450 really be 250. I think that's where, I think that was the intent. And if I'm speaking wrong, gentlemen, please speak up and say so.
Yeah.
But I think that was the intent so that when somebody, you know, quickly was looking at tax rates as a comparison.
Right.
They wouldn't, they wouldn't run from the $9.
Right.
Or they wouldn't use it as, I mean, your competition uses it against you too.
Leverage, that's right.
And if you want to go like to 450, then, you know, the methodology would have to be changed.
Okay.
If not, you know, we would have a drastic.
Oh, we'd have a big drop in, well, it looks like it's possible the state might eliminate some of the car tax anyway. I mean, some legislation for that now, so. I don't think they realize how we need some money.
Yeah, there you go.
But, now, I opened it up to committee members, any board members that are in attendance that have any questions or comments they'd like to make. Good?
And I would like to add, the merchant's capital rate is 275. And that's set, you know, that cannot be changed because General Assembly said that in 1978, your rate has to stay the same as what it was then, so.
Well, would you be comfortable in working with Kim to try to?
Sure.
Get that rate from $9 so the optics of it's better?
Yes.
And y'all get back, back with the committee?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're down to 5B, Capital Improvement Plan Review.
Okay, I sent a new copy of the report before you this afternoon. I did send one out on Friday, and it is in your packet. And in this new report, I have highlighted the changes, and I'll go through those when I get to them. So just to let everyone refresh their memories about what a capital improvements plan is, it is an important management tool that we use for forecasting upcoming capital needs. This document helps us during the budget process to identify the capital items that should be included for that year and how these items will be funded. And it helps prepare staff, especially me, if we need to go out for financing. So we need to see what we can fund with our current revenues and what will have to be financed. So our CIP is reviewed annually by county departments, including the school board, so you do have school board items in this report. Items included in the CIP must also be included in the budget. So you're adopting this CIP plan today does not bind you in any kind of way financially. Departments still have to request these funds in their budget. Some localities do it differently, some accept the CIP and it's gospel. That's what you go by and that's what you're gonna fund. But we do it a little bit different here. So there are three categories included in the CIP that goes to the departments each year. They can request items be placed in a Tier One, a Tier Two, or Tier Three. Tier One is anything that they deem as an immediate or imminent need. And that's, for example, a vehicle that's starting to give them problems, the engine's going out, it's lived way beyond its useful life, that would be something imminent. Expected replacements, you can also see vehicles in that as well, but they're letting you know, hey, in two years, I'm gonna be past that useful life, I'm gonna have so many miles that that vehicle's gonna have to be replaced. Tier Three is what I call pie in the sky. It's your visionary request, if money's not an object, what would you ask for? And one of the things that I'll note that's in this, this particular thing, and I just pulled it out of the air, is library branches. So your library wants to expand and place libraries in different areas in the county. And so that would be a visionary request. The CIP increased this year from last by $71.4 million. The current CIP totals $225 million over the next five years. And some of the changes, the large changes, occurred in the following categories. Our schools went up by $9.6 million over the prior year. And of course, most, all of those will be funded with the new 1% sales tax revenue. So their new total is at $57.6 million. The landfill increased by $6 million, their new total is $11.8 million. And that is to start construction on Phase Three and also to close the majority of Sale A and a portion of Sale B. Water and sewer went up by $18.7 million, and it includes major construction projects that start in this particular document in '26 and following. So their new total's at $21.4 million. Fire and rescue went up by $2.6 million, and it does include increases to volunteer fire and rescue apparatus funding, as well as a multi-year project to replace all the portable radios that are older than 10 years old and they can't be supported any longer. So their new total is at $8.3 million. And then building and grounds is a big jump here, it's $33 million, which is one of the changes that I made. It includes the construction of the new jail as well as plans for a possible new boardroom. So now that new total for building and grounds is at $97.1 million. So I'll entertain any questions you might have with regard to the report. I hope you've had a chance to look at it. I have reviewed it and I've compared it to the request for this year, and the requests are in line with the report as it stands right now. So the changes that have been made, I did mention one, the jail reflects the new cost because, of course, as we move along, that cost is going to be inflated because of inflation. Also, we are now going to request funding from DRF for Recreation Master Plan, and that's a little bit more than what we had thought originally. And also, one thing that I couldn't highlight, Wayside Bridge was on there again, and I needed to remove that. So those are the three items that I changed from the report that was in your original packet, but this is the one that needs to be approved tonight. If, unless you all have changes, I wanna see something different.
Questions from committee members?
I have none, thank you.
Other members of the board that have questions? I don't have a question, but I want you to reiterate that we're adopting this, but it all can be changed.
Absolutely.
It's all, we gotta figure all the revenue, we gotta figure anything. We're not promising anybody anything at this point.
Budget documents go out, I remind them, just because you put it in your CIP does not mean that it's going in the budget. You need to request it in the budget. And even if you request it in the budget, it depends on whether we have funding for it or not, as to whether it remains in the budget.
Well, I think as a committee, we just wanna be sure that we send the right message. We don't wanna make any false promises to anyone. And I know you don't, but we wanna make sure all staff understands, you know, don't make any promises. Because I think it's gonna be quite a tough budget year.
Nothing guaranteed.
Nobody's guaranteed anything, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, which is committee's pleasure?
Ms. Chairman, you need that in form of a motion, is that correct, Kim? I'll go ahead and make the motion to recommend to the full board approve the attached fiscal year 2024 through 2028 CIP at this evening's business meeting.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
They got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. Motion carries. 5C, it's your night, Kim.
I know, I'm just staying in place.
What have you done to deserve this?
So I just wanna give you a high-level review of what's gone on so far with our budget. So documents went out to departments in early December, requests were due back at the end of December, so we're about two weeks from that. We're working on continuing to review those. We have meetings set up, of course, with our department heads starting next week to go through each and every budget request to determine, you know, what absolutely has to stay and some things that we could perhaps review and maybe reduce if we need to. Working on salary information and that kind of thing right now. So to say I have a lot of information, I really don't at this point. I definitely don't have anything in terms of revenue right now. Usually, we don't start doing that review until February. So some things that I'll point out that I've noted so far is, of course, reassessment is continuing. Last year, you all placed in the budget $500,000 for reassessment. We were able to carry over about $137,000 that remained from the prior year. But the upcoming budget is going to require $787,460 to finish that project, which is about 287 more than what we had in last year's budget. Also, I looked just yesterday to see where the Consumer Price Index stood. Usually, that's what we use to determine what exactly we're gonna give as far as a cost of living adjustment. And so in December, and that's the one we go by, was 7%. The comp board is planning a 5% COLA, that's currently what's on the table right now, they could change that, and that is effective July 1 of 2023. So we have three constitutional officers that are on our plan. And so you almost have to, you don't have to, but you really should mirror, mirror what the comp board gives, just to make sure that we're all in line with one another. So if we were to give a 5%, and this is just, you know, shooting from the hip.
Correct.
It'll cost roughly $830,000 just for our general fund employees. So I did include water and sewer nor landfill because they are enterprise funds, so they would have to pick up whatever that increase is. Tax dollars would not pay that. The revenues they take in from their fund would go to pay for those increases. We also will have to pay our county share of debt service for the Cyber Park Shell Building, that's something new. I'm estimating, I don't have an amortization schedule, but based on what I've gotten just as of today, it's gonna be roughly $61,000. We will pay interest on that note for six years unless we land somebody in that park or in that building. And then they will take over those payments. And then they will take over those payments, as I understand it. But I may have some of that incorrect. But I do know it is a six-year interest-only payment, and that is our share of it. Inflation continues to create increases to fuel and electricity. So we have to make sure we have plenty to cover those needs there. This budget includes fifteen brand-new full-time requests for positions, twenty new part-time positions, and three requests to convert part-time positions to full-time positions. And that total is one point eight million dollars if we do all that. Now, I did bring a listing of what they all were, but some of them you're almost obligated to do. There are ten new SRO part-time positions. So the sheriff will be adding those new SRO positions as part-time. So really, you won't have retirement to pay on those guys. But one thing they wanna make sure of is that they would be able to get health insurance. They would only work during the school year instead of year-round.
And they, are they in the ten number? I mean, the twenty number?
That's in the twenty part-time. Another big chunk of that is the fact that there are eight new part-time positions for our new Meadow Ridge Convenience Center as site attendants. So that's seven workers and one supervisor for that site. So you're building that new facility, and I feel like you're gonna want it staffed to make sure, you know.
But aren't they paid at the enterprise fund?
They are. And I did include, so yes, the enterprise fund would pay them. They have also requested two drivers because of the increased volume from that site being open. But that's just some of the things you have to do. But we will definitely be speaking with each of those department heads to see what the true need is. And we'll definitely be conversing with finance committee for some help on that as well. One of the other things that's included in full-time is there are six new EMS firefighters that are being requested to fund a new ambulance in the Ringel area. So that's six of your fifteen there. It would take six to actually staff that for three shifts. Two on each shift. Any more questions about salaries? I can go into greater depth, but.
You don't want to if you don't have to.
Any questions from committee members?
Not at this point. We'll probably take a deeper dive.
Any questions from other committee members? Kim, have you, I mean, Kim, have you had any discussions with Sheriff Taylor about the hiring of the SR? Because I know he's mentioned to us about the training component because it takes special training.
Yes.
And, you know, again, because I, I am concerned about our budget this year. We need to have good dialogue with him about the timeframe because we need to know really if we're gonna have to fund all of them or part of them.
Right. So right now, we have nine SROs, current SROs. One, they just hired as a full-time position. They are currently in that grant. Most of our SROs, I would say all of them, but the brand-new one, make way more than the base salary that we're getting back from D C J S. But he did that so we could start drawing on those funds, which is very smart to do that. So his idea to make part-time SROs as opposed to full-time SROs is that possibly you could get someone that already has training and has retired, either from the city or from the county, to come back if they're just working during the school year, if they could get their health insurance. And if they work below a certain hour, number of hours, they can also draw their retirement benefit. So it would be a great thing for them to do if they're willing to do that. Because to be an SRO, you can't just snatch anybody up and throw them in that position. It does take a lot of training. So if you can get somebody that's already trained, that helps us too.
Well, that, that's kinda my question. And I don't wanna belabor the point now, but I wanna make sure we get it from Sheriff Taylor or, see Mr. Nicholson's here, so I'm sure he'll relay the message. But do, do we have a, a big enough pot to draw from within our locality to fill those part-time, ten part-time spots we talked for, talked about for our elementary school?
I don't know about all ten, but I do know they've identified a few, maybe one or two or something like that. Cause I've been in conversations with them about that.
Cause I'm assuming you've got those numbers in this budget.
All ten of them are in the budget currently. Also, we are putting three hundred thousand dollars in there to actually supplement the ones that are not getting the full ride from the grant to make that whole. So next year, it'll be three hundred thousand, cause we'll run out of that first. It pays a hundred percent the first nine months. And then after that, we have to pick up twenty-five percent of it. Plus, these people aren't making that, you know, that dollar figure. So it's greater. But in a sense, it is less because the ten that you're adding to the general fund doesn't have all the benefits. They just have health insurance and FICA on top of, you know, the base salary of forty-three, which some may have to come in, and they may pay them more than that, but I'm not sure. So they'd be reviewing those. But right now, it's just in there at that base forty-three thousand that the grant would have paid were they, had they been in the grant. It's a complicated creature, I tell you that. I had that spreadsheet up for a week trying to maneuver all things around and make sure that we have the right people in those positions. Cause we do have two SROs that are fully funded by our school system. One of them is currently open, but the other one is filled right now. And we needed to make sure they didn't get in the grant, cause you can't double dip.
So has the school system indicated any willingness to fund through their budget some or part of these new ten part-time folks?
Now, yeah, Ms. Worley's here. I talked to her about it some, but.
Maybe add some comp.
Well, I know they've expressed such great concerns about safety of the children, you know. We'd hope maybe the chairman would consider that.
At least have the conversation of it anyway.
Okay. Anybody else got anything?
So if we move on, the other items that are in the budget that I wanted to mention is the capital request, which kinda mirror our CIP. Most of those are for repairs to county facilities, maybe roofs or roof repairs, carpet, that kinda thing, and also vehicles. But I will say that most of the vehicles that we are purchasing now, we're trying to purchase it through a lease as opposed to just an outright, I need thirty-five thousand dollars. It may just be ten this year. So it helps with the budget. And we're gonna look at all of those to make sure they're in that situation if we can get them in a lease. So that request is seven hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And that may or may not be new money because we do have maybe a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars that we have been funding deputies' vehicles for a while, or the sheriff's office vehicles. And that's in there as, you know, kind of, we already had that kinda budgeted to begin with. And of course, I mentioned that D C J S grant for the SRO positions will need three hundred thousand dollars as a local match. And that will appear in the sheriff's budget, just so that you all can see, cause that is definitely identified. What we had been doing is putting all those matches in kind of a, the local grant match line that's non-departmental. Because the thought was in the past that if you had that money remaining and you didn't get the grant, then a department might think, oh, I've got three hundred thousand dollars extra money that I can spend. But this is definitely something that you all have approved and something that you know about. And that way, if you just all of a sudden take these high-paid SROs out and put them in a grant, but you don't really see the match, then you don't really see that cost in the sheriff's department or for public safety. So that's where it'll go this year. Another thing that'll be a challenge, we did plug the current budget with eight hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So we were short before we started with dollar one, and we will not have that available for twenty-four.
Okay.
I mean, you, you would be taking from your savings account, for sure.
Can't do that.
We don't wanna do that if we couldn't help it. Now, I've given you the challenges. The other one is a million dollars should go in your economic development fund every year. I try to tell you all that. I think last year, where we were just shy of a million dollars. The way incentives are wrote now, you pay on performance. We don't pay them upfront. But some of your businesses that have located or meeting performance. And so Morgan Olson's beginning, and they're big chunks. And so those big chunks eat into your fund balance that's in that economic development fund. Not to mention, right now, it looks like you have a pretty good balance there. But some of the matches for grading projects are in there, and that hadn't all come out yet. So just be aware that we do have these obligations, that we have approved, and that we will have to come up with it some way, even if you don't put it in there. We have documents that say that we will. So that's also a challenge to be able to find a new million dollars to go there. Now, some possible budget relief. I'm gonna share some good news. So we had, one of our bonds was complete in twenty twenty-three, so it frees up one point four million dollars, which is great.
And Kim, that was the middle school bond, right?
Middle school, mhm. And then, of course, we're, we are.
And how many years did it take us to pay that off?
We borrowed that money in two thousand and three. So we still have some middle school debt.
I knew what it was.
This is just one of them.
That was a facetious question.
But we still have some of that, I think, middle school debt might still be. We might have one thing left, but that's it. And then we'll be left with our high school debt, mostly high school debt. Reassessment, we are in the midst of that. But we hope to not have to wait till twenty-five with some of the things that they are discovering. Like they're looking at the building permits from twenty nineteen to current. So those things will go ahead and be added to the tax rolls. Also, the forty-seven hundred buildings, that's another potential for tax revenue that we wouldn't have had last year. So of course, hopefully, I'll know more come February when those things, you know, cause we gave them, I think, they needed that on by January one. And so, you know, as they're working through that, I'm hoping that we will have some figures, you know, as time moves along. So hopefully, that'll help us some. And also, I think there will be an increase in sales tax and meals tax, just because everything's more expensive. It's more expensive to go out to eat, it's more expensive to buy things. And so as such, those items should go up. But that's some of our, our good revenue news and some debt that's falling off.
Of course, we're gonna lose some sales tax from groceries.
Yep.
I'm, I'm not trying to be Debbie Downey.
I know. I'm, I'm trying to give some positive.
Just trying to be a realist.
He's being a negative Nancy today, Greg, down on.
So then I get to next steps. I've mentioned that we will have those meetings starting next week. We will also be reviewing revenues beginning in early February. So we should have some revenue figures for you at the next finance meeting. And we will be working throughout this process with the finance committee to develop strategies that we can start bringing our budget into balance.
Any questions from committee?
Good.
I think I'm good.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, other board members?
Just with all this good news, what is the total of, if unless we curb some of these costs, what's the total number that we're gonna have to come up with for next year's budget? And can you give an idea of what the tax rate would have to go up to?
Well, your penny brings in around a four hundred thousand dollars, each penny. So it would be quite a bit. Last year, when I got to the end of requests, it was about five point six million out. That's before we started jiggering and cutting and that kinda thing. There's no way you could do that type of increase. So that's the work that we'll have to do altogether to, to bring that into balance. And it'll probably be that again, cause the mentality and the rationale is you'll never get if you don't ask for it. So people are gonna ask for what they need. And then we just have to determine whose need is greater than the other and prioritize things. So that's an every-year thing. It's usually about five million dollars out. I don't have that figure currently, cause I'm still working on some salary information to get it in and then make sure that it's right. But I feel like it'll probably be close to that figure.
And I don't wanna mention what that tax increase is on five million.
That's a lot.
I don't wanna mention it. I, I was pleasantly surprised and happy that I saw some email streams where it appears that the forty-seven hundred roughly properties that were found prior, the one we invalidated, actually, approximately the same number was found by the new company. So I know, I know some of them are uninhabitable, so they need to come off. And I know, I know Robin and her group's working diligently on that, but it's, you know, that may be an opportunity to help us fill that pot, man. So we appreciate it.
And also, some of the forty-seven may be part, that's why I said and/or, because it may be one of those building permits.
That falls in there too.
That falls in the building permit. So you're not gonna count it but one time, so.
Right. But it, but it, it does appear that we're gonna be able to generate some revenue to cover some of those deficiencies. And I am glad, you know, I asked the question because it should not have taken us twenty years to retire that debt, because we had, we made some, hindsight's always perfect. Made some decisions we probably shouldn't have made in the beginning of that in two thousand and three to pay interest only.
They on your high schools.
Yeah.
That's on the high school debt. So that started in oh seven, oh eight.
And, and, you know, we kick a can down the road, so I hope we all have learned that's not prudent. You know, even though you were waiting to get really cheap money, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think Dave Arnold might have some insight into these potentially newly-found buildings. He's really worked very hard on this, and he knows it better than most of us.
Just wanna make sure, just make sure everything's communicated completely as much, as best we can right out of the gate. So the forty-seven hundred, actually forty-eight fifty-three, if numbers, if I'm recalling correctly, we did pass that list on to the new reassessment contractor. Based upon the, they're only looking at buildings that Bright Minds valued at five thousand dollars or more, because you don't get the ROI for things less than that, because we're paying twenty-six bucks per visit out there. Pearson's did confirm that approximately ninety-five percent of those buildings that they've reviewed on that list are in fact standing, they're legitimate. So that was, some people might have not expected that. The other piece to this that was unexpected is when we asked for this report to be run, we asked for newly-discovered buildings that did not have a building permit associated with them. Well, in fact, according to, and Robin can verify this, but Pearson's has stated this multiple, on multiple occasions, that the more substantial buildings, meaning substantially from a monetary standpoint, have, do in fact have a permit associated with them. So when Ms. Vanderhaid had the point up there a minute ago about commissioner revenue, Pearson's is actively working the backlog of permits, there is an overlap there, you know what I'm saying? Some of those same buildings are referenced in the backlog of permit stack as well as in the list of newly-discovered buildings. So I just wanna make sure we're all clear on that, so. So, I just want to make sure we're all clear on that, so. Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Dave.
Any other questions?
Anybody got any questions?
I'm good.
Everybody good? Everybody's good? We're going to move to 5D.
5D. That's the budget calendar. This is an easy one. It's pretty much the same calendar from last year. So, you should have it before you, because up on the screen, it's very tiny. So, where we are today is we are having a finance committee to kind of give you a briefing of what's going on. We're meeting with those department heads on January the 23rd. Then, at your meeting on February the.
21st.
21st, I need glasses. We're going to review the potential revenues, and I may have more challenges, things like that. We may not have any challenges. Let's hope, hope we don't. On March 10th, the county administrative recommended budget will be presented to you all. On the 15th, of course, that's going to be, there are, a great presentation will be made. You all will get it on the 10th. It will be presented on the 15th, and then, the budget will be approved to be advertised. Now, that does not mean that you have to approve that budget. You can make changes to that budget. So, just know advertising it doesn't mean, usually, that's the one that we go with, but we have changed it in the past. Our public hearing will be held on the 3rd of April, and then, on April the 10th, you all will approve the school budget and the county budget. It is an aggressive schedule. It will take a lot of work to get to April the 10th.
Any questions or comments about the calendar?
You need that in form of a motion for this evening?
Yeah, we need a motion to send it to, for approval to the business meeting.
You want to do that, then I'll second you. How about that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion that we recommend that this attached budget calendar to the full board for approval at tonight's board business meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Don't tell me it's you again. Wait a minute.
Okay, motion's approved. We're down to item 6, matters from committee members. Mr. Tucker.
I just want to thank Ms. Vanderheide for her diligent and tenacious work, taking deep dives into all these schedules along with the spreadsheets. So, we really appreciate all this information you put together for us, so I just wanted to thank you openly and publicly.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Kim, Robin. Appreciate you being here. You know, when you specialize in certain things and others don't, those who specialize need to break it down to those that don't. So, thank you for being here for this. Thank you, sir.
I'll open it. Any comments from other board members in attendance?
Mr. Chairman, I, I didn't notice it in the email traffic, but could we get a, a electronic copy of this, Kim? Our slide, the slideshow that was presented? Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
I'd just comment only. Thank y'all for your hard work getting everything together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd like to echo the same comments. Ms. Worley's here from the school board. Glad to have you in attendance, and I know you're always looking out after school money. So, be generous to us when you come over here and ask for what you're going to ask for. And Tommy, Tommy sitting there, Mr. Nichols grinning, please send that message back to Sheriff Taylor. It's a tough budget year, because we know how he is. He'll roll his suitcase in here and want to take it all home. We've experienced that with him in the past. And Robin, thank you so much, Ms. Commissioner Revenue, Ms. Gore, for being here tonight and for all your good efforts, and appreciate you working with Mr. Arnold and Ms. Vanderheide on the, both the budget and trying to put the county in the best light possible by looking at that number that seems to always kind of jump out there at us. Appreciate that very much. Thank you for all you do. So, having said that, that completes the agenda for this evening, so I will declare the meeting adjourned.